We'll turn it over to Ross and let him introduce the gentleman. And then we'll do the roll call.
Y'all do the roll call first, then I'm gonna do an introduction.
Okay.
Seager. Arsomont.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Truxello. Doherty.
Here.
Milligan. Gaines.
Here.
Martino.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Troncoso. Walker.
Here.
Barria.
Here.
Binings.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum. Do we need to assign alternates or not?
Yeah, well, not this is the presentation. There's no vote involved, so.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Good, thank you. Mr. Ross, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Commission. I'm Ross Liner, Director of Planning Development for St. Tammany Parish. And we have our consultants in to provide an update to the Commission for the multimodal transportation plan. I think this plan started maybe a year and a half ago or so. And what it is, it's trying to provide a path forward for St. Tammany Parish in regards to safety, um, access, and providing a way to move goods and services and people around St. Tammany Parish in a safe and efficient way. So currently, right now, St. Tammany Parish does not have a transportation plan on the books adopted by the Commission for the parish. That provides a lot of hurdles when we want to try and build new roads, expand roads, widen roads, extend roads, provide safety improvements, all of the issues of not having a plan. The plan also will provide access to state and federal funds. Without a plan, we can't apply for the funds. So there are multiple funding agencies out there, however, we can't access those funds until this plan, you know, is adopted by the Commission. So I really wish we were in implementation phase, but I always say that this particular administration has done more planning than the previous two administrations put together. And I'm gonna stand by that statement, and I'll say it at the podium. So right now, what we're trying to do is provide an update to the Commission, where we are, what's the steps that we've taken, and where we're going. So right now, we have the draft plan online. It's been advertised, and it's open for public comment until October 25th. So we're, in the first public comment period, I can tell you, probably received about 300 emails and comments. From there, we refined into the draft plan, which is, again, I had said, posted online and open for public comment until October 25th. We've received a few comments, but I think we've hit a lot of, um, the negative comments or the concerns in the first half when we did this back in March or April or so, and addressed those concerns. So I'm hoping the, um, perception of the draft plan is much more well-received than, um, kind of like the overall broad stroke that we had brushed, um, back in the spring. So from there, we'll present this to the Commission. We'll close the public comment period on 25th. We'll take those comments. We'll refine the draft plan again to what we'll call a final draft, get that to the Commission. I'm gonna say maybe mid-November, late-November, um, based on the amount of comments that we have. I'm hoping those, like I said, you know, reduce considerably. Um, just because I just, will tell us we did a good job for the public if we have, you know, less comments. So I'm hoping that's the direction we're going. Um, we'll provide hard copies to the Commission for review. We will ask the Commission, um, for comments. We'll address those in a, in another iteration of the plan if needed. And from there, we'll bring it to the Commission if it's December or January for consideration of adoption of the multimodal transportation plan. Then that's kind of the trajectory we're on right now. This plan is very much vehicular-focused. We have another project going on with the Regional Planning Commission that started last month called the Comprehensive Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan. So that really takes parish-wide approach at bike-ped options. So this plan right here is, I wouldn't say it's strictly vehicular, but it's 90%. We have a sister project going on for bike-ped. So just as you're reading this and going through it, just know that we are addressing bicycle pedestrian, um, movements in another project. With that, um...
Yeah, you don't have to pay for it?
That's right. Well, we had to pay 20%, so that was, that was a project funded by the Regional Planning Commission at 80%, 20% match. So it's, it's a fantastic, you know, way to go. Any introductory, um, questions or comments before we get started?
Is this, is this plan gonna address any kind of public transportation?
There is a section here that addresses public transportation, which I would tell you is only about a page or two. And it states that at this time, we don't have the population density to spend, I want to say, close to maybe 70, 80 million dollars that we just can't operate and maintain. That, it's just what it is. It's just the numbers we can't make match yet because of our numbers of the density and the overall numbers of, uh, population. So we said, based on moving forward, looking at population, at which time it makes sense, and yeah, we need to look at it. So we addressed it that way. All right, I'll turn it over to the consultants. Get him moving, and then, um, I will not be here for the end of this presentation. But if y'all think of any questions or comments, certainly welcome to send them my way. But like I said, we'll be presenting another draft to the Commission, maybe a month or a month and a half or so. And I hope everyone knows that maybe, uh, the draft plan was attached to the calendar invite, so if you wanted to see it, it is attached.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. My name is Matthew Martinck, and I'm with CSRS and represent our planning and various government advisory service lines, uh, and based in Baton Rouge, but have been engaged with, uh, this particular multimodal transportation plan, uh, since the beginning. And so what I'll do is try to consolidate what you have access to, which is, I think, around a hundred-page plan. We tried to keep it as condensed as possible, uh, infographic-friendly as possible, uh, into about 13 slides. So bear with me while I do that, and don't hesitate to chime in as, as I progress here, and, uh, happy to field any questions at any point. So, you know, this is just sort of high-level, uh, but sort of big reasons why you need a transportation plan is you're facing pressures of rapid growth. You've got inter-jurisdictional coordination to account for. Uh, you, like the rest of the state, uh, have the pressures of aging infrastructure. There is a need for growth management, which is to deploy infrastructure in places where you really want to grow. Um, there is, uh, a, a need to coordinate transportation investments with land use regulations. Um, you have significant, uh, existing congestion and, um, capacity constraints within your current network, uh, and you have limited funding. So it's really a question of taking all of that, prioritizing, defining what, what should be on the table today relative to decisions that you still need to make and community conversations that are gonna be and are currently happening. Um, but to put that on the board and say, what can we bite off and what can we actually work towards implementing in a cohesive, uh, and collaborative way? So with that, uh, and, and I'll address, we, I think, uh, I addressed you probably nine months ago or so. Uh, but when we talked about that, this issue of land use constraints, right? So you have a rapidly growing parish, but you also have, uh, considerable growth constraints on your built environment, and whether that be environmental and sort of hurricane-type storm surge risk, uh, on the South Shore of St. Tammany, or whether that be ecologically sensitive areas that you want to account for. Um, I think there's general consensus that, that there wants, that, that there's a need to balance sort of the urban growth pressures and especially the Slidell, Mandeville, Covington areas alongside with the sensitivity and quality of place and rural character that, that constitutes, uh, much of St. Tammany Parish. So with that, on the left-hand side, it's just an overview of sort of the timeline that, that, uh, we have been progressing with. Um, we have had two very, very extensive rounds of public comment and, uh, public engagement. Uh, I was happy to report that in the second round of public engagement, um, I, I would call it a marker of success, but Ross alluded to 300 emails. Those are the ones that hit his inbox and the online, uh, sort of forums that we had set up. We had well over 1,500 comments, uh, which are now accounted for in this, uh, draft plan before you and, and posted online for final review. Uh, and since that has been posted, I think what it's been up since, mm, no, before, maybe, it's been up for a couple of weeks, but we've only received like two or three comments. So I, I'm happy with the fact that we accounted for a lot of that friction through the process, which is how that's supposed to happen. But like, like Ross alluded to, you've got a draft plan before you today. Uh, I don't think there's any action required of you today. Uh, and our hope is to gather all the remaining public comment and Commission comment and bring back to you uh, as final of a product as we possibly can ultimately before. Your process goes through Commission and Council or just Commission, Ross? Just Commission, okay? Um, but to make...
Let me stop you just a minute. In the number of emails that, uh, y'all have received, um, how many were, were negative?
Uh, I, so, there's, I, I would say most of them were about alignments that were sort of in various iterations of planning documents that, that we, uh, took stock of during our review process, coupled with some suggestions for inner neighborhood connectivity and resolving sort of, you know, the pocket subdivision issues. Um, and that's where most of those comments generally originated for, and I would characterize them as not wanting to see certain types of transportation investments.
Right. So of the bigger projects that ultimately are in this plan is what we found that St. Tammany Parish wants. What we tried to do is provide some interconnectivity between smaller developments, and the people of St. Tammany Parish absolutely did not want that. So they want the larger, bigger investments rather than connecting their small neighborhood with another neighborhood that provides interconnectivity between maybe two state highways, maybe Highway 22 and 1085. You know, if you put in two roads, you can go straight north and south. That did not go over well. It makes sense in a transportation planning world, but people of St. Tammany Parish spoke against that.
The, the summary of that is people like their dead end. Uh, and so, but, you know, you do have this issue that we have not been able to fully resolve, which is you have a lot of pocket subdivisions with single points of access, and those single points of access create congestions on existing roadways with limited capacity. Uh, and providing that inner neighborhood sort of more grid-like system. Um, while there is some of that still intact, a lot of the more robust programming that we had initially suggested has fallen off.
So that would be trying to correct some development patterns of the past. What we're able to do is correct how we do things in the future. And what we've done is in the unified development code that is now being implemented, subdivisions of lots, subdivision with lots over 100 now have to have two points of access. So we heard that loud and clear for the past few years at the Commission level. So we brought that and instituted it in the UDC. So while it may not be able to correct problems again with the past developments, we can certainly do better moving forward.
Uh, anyways, we would, you know, in our mind, and certainly as a Commission, you are free to deliberate on this as long as you feel necessary, but we would, it, it's our goal to have a final product, uh, before you, at the end of the year, and, and ultimately maybe even consider it on the December, January timeline. Um, on the right side of the, the slide there, you just have a content overview and, and the overall structure of the plan. But I will dive into the sort of meat of it. I know some of you have seen this vision statement in the past, so I will not belabor, uh, you with, with reading it again. All right? Uh, "Our vision for the St. Tammany Parish Transportation Network is to build upon the parish's strong foundation of community while balancing demands for the suburban, rural, and natural environments to improve existing infrastructure, enhance commercial corridors, and promote neighborhood connectivity. Uh, the new connections should link our parks, communities, and commercial centers, as well as better connect the parish to the region, maintaining the parish's status as a premier place to live, work, and play." Uh, and I, I will say that the connectivity issue, while for vehicular connectivity, there was a, a robust response to. Um, generally speaking, throughout the public engagement process, there was a lot of preference for, uh, alternative transportation, uh, bicycle pedestrian, pedestrian infrastructure, and specifically as that relates to the St. Tammany Trace and connecting existing neighborhoods onto the trace. And we got nothing but positive reception on those types of recommendations. So they like the, they like the bike-ped connectivity less, or more adverse to, uh, the, the vehicular congestion or the vehicular connectivity. But, uh, primary goals and, and in your, and in the document, there's, uh, all of the objectives are, are really, um, elaborated on. But implement roadway capacity, uh, improvements, streamline policies, and prioritize, uh, particular projects. Let's define a transportation program that we can get out there and get ahead of and try to stabilize the existing congestion and capacity issues. Uh, let's promote alternative modes of transportation and, and develop a coordinated inter-jurisdictional, uh, approach. So this is just a sample of some of the public workshop content that we had. We had several rounds of project prioritization, uh, with the public and, uh, online forum, forums in order for them to participate. Uh, the first one, we did have quite a bit of participation, but the second one, uh, for whatever reason, we had three to four times the level of participation. I guess the word really got out. Uh, but like I said, that's, that's why we do that, that we want to hear that. We, so by the time it comes before you, uh, the community has largely vetted and established priorities, uh, for itself and that these are, are things that resonate with, with the general public in terms of what they'd like to see in a transportation plan. Again, some more examples of the types of, uh, exercises that we, uh, had in, in the transportation plan. I will say we got a lot of, uh, positive feedback around resolving capacity issues. Uh, again, going back to that bike and ped-friendly sort of neighborhoods and looking at like, how do we, how do we reconstitute existing, especially neighborhood-scale commercial corridors, uh, and making sure that those are really thriving places that accommodate multiple modes of transportation. Uh, less interest, I would say, in the, in the, uh, kind of continuation of, or expansion of, uh, greenways and that type of thing. Not that it was not a positive thing. It was just less robustly positive than the, those other three elements. So, um, what I'm gonna go through right now and, and is elaborated on in the plan is the different types of roadway improvement projects and transportation alternatives that are in there. Um, this is the sort of final-ish or draft-final-ish list of what we, um, have constituted as, as projects that should remain on the books. Um, ultimately, it will be up to the parish to decide what it wants to prioritize and how to, to really advance a program. Uh, but certainly some element of this, uh, overall suite of projects over the next couple of pages. Um, whether that be 20% of them, whether that be 50% of them, is, I would argue, implementable today under existing revenue streams and leveraging existing federal and state resources to do so. Yes, sir?
Question. And I'm, I'm just looking at this one section right now, but is this seeming to be west-heavy?
Yes, so it, it's, it's, it's definitely, you've probably got a more heavy capital focus in your, uh, in your Mandeville-Covington urbanized area than you do your Slidell, and that's also because you have slightly different growth pressures in those two.
I do see that, but with, uh, but just like anything else in our parish, I think voices are gonna want to be heard, or are the comments looking for concern or needs?
We, we did not, so we certainly, we did not hear in the public comment process any notion of, you know, the east is getting more than the west or that, this kind of thing. Uh, I would say we probably cut a lot more out of the eastern, or the western side of the parish than we did the eastern side of the parish. Uh, and even still, the western side of the parish probably has a larger share of overall projects, and where you draw that boundary, I don't know. Uh, but the, the Mandeville-Covington urbanized area has more attention paid to capacity investments because the growth pressures are more significant there.
So in a sense, geographically, that because of the way the roads are on one side versus the other, I can understand that.
From a, from a planning standpoint, that makes sense, that, that, that you will see the exact same thing on the southern versus northern side of the parish. There's almost no, there's very little here, uh, on the northern part of the parish. Uh, you know, and what we see there, and it corresponds with your existing urban growth boundary and those kinds of things, is that that's not new capacity that's needed. What's needed there is maintaining existing infrastructure obligations and, and keeping those roads at the capacity that they are now. Now, that's a planning perspective and not a political one, so certainly i- if there needs to be a finer pencil put on any of that, we're happy to, to take a look at that.
And then my last question, I mean, you might hit it, I don't know, but are you looking at, I mean, is transportation and is roadway bridges?
Well, so a lot of these projects have bridges. Well, I, if, a lot of these projects are gonna have bridges because of the channel features that they cross or those kinds of things. And I know that the, um, the issue in Madisonville is, has been sort of paramount, and that project is, is well-featured within, uh, the plan, if it's not already in your capital improvement plan. I can't recall, but that particular bridge issue has been called to our attention. Otherwise, I would say the, the larger focus is on, you know, existing channels that are ultimately gonna have to be accommodated to increase capacity.
I'm sorry, I got the re- question.
No, no, keep going.
I piled them up on you here. Uh, my last one would be is, what is the, how is the, working with DOTD, DOTD? And how would that, because I mean, something to cross and over into the state?
So most of the projects that you're seeing here are on either the federal aid network or the state route network. Um, there are some locally-defined projects, especially in the transportation alternative space. But a lot of the sort of new local roads that we would have proposed were those sort of interconnectivity pieces that, that fell off through the public comment process. And I would say the bulk of those, uh, were really, let's see here.
Would you always look at it to partnerships and to relationships with these entities that will have an impact on how it's gonna get, if it's even ready to die?
Absolutely. So I think there's a couple of things to consider here, and, and I may elaborate on them a little bit more. We had the DOTD District Office embedded throughout our process. We also had, um, well, I, now he's, I believe, on, on, uh, House Commerce Committee, but, uh, we had members-of-year delegation participating, uh, in this process and their staffs. Um, and a- at the end of the day, when you ultimately say, so like right now on the board, you've got lines, and you've got rough order of magnitude costs assigned to them based on, you know, a typical section and the length of roadway and the number of, say, bridge features that, that would really drive costs on a project like that. The, the next iteration of this, and what the parish, I, I think, is intending on advancing rather quickly, is, um, you know, of this stack, I think we've got about a billion dollars defined here, which, you know, we started with about $2 billion. But of that stack, whatever the parish can sort of drive a locally-funded program with under existing tax authorizations, you really need to move into what we call sort of stage-zero type feasibility processes, which are gonna begin to more accurately account for cost, the, you know, National Environmental Policy Act implications and, and everything that comes into that process. And through that process, typically, you'll have federal and state project numbers assigned and so that you can get in there and leverage the formula and discretionary space in a more, uh, robust manner. Yep. Uh, so these are all just extension projects, um, and I believe this is the entirety of the map of extension projects. I think we've got, we may be missing one. Nope, I think all 19 through 31 are on there. Um, and this is just improving, uh, connectivity and extending alignments on existing roadways. Yes, sir?
Uh, Mr. President, so I see the cost on this is $91,600,000. And I'd just like to interject that, um, I still don't see public transit on here. And if our parish is going to grow, that needs to be addressed now. That's where the future is, um, like it or not, and we're spending a lot of money. We're talking about mass transit between the east and the west. That's not mentioned, so I'd like to...
Uh, understood, uh, and just planning brain, I'm, I'm with you. Um, the, I will say, so there is a dedicated section on, uh, a larger sort of circular bus network that would be a, a routine service and a, a lower-hanging fruit in the public transportation realm from an implementation standpoint. I think before we can get in there and really define tra- true mass transit, um, the parish, in coordination with these other jurisdictions, has to say, "I want to grow here" because wherever that answer is, and, and if they want to grow in A, and then they want to grow in B, that's, that's the, that's the transit project. And frankly, we don't have those answers at the moment. And so just like there were sort of some speculative roadway alignments that were out there that have been filtered out, um, throughout the process, I, I, the, the same sort of thing is transit. I think that growth management question is key in order to being able to effectively respond to that answer. Uh, and so I hear you loud and clear, and if there's additional call-out around those types of issues being, needing to be at the forefront uh, of the overall goals and objectives, certainly receptive to that. Yes, ma'am?
I actually have a question. I'm not sure if you were in here when we all discussed earlier. So how, how open are you guys, how open are you guys to communicating with private developers? We, last week heard, yeah, last week, we heard a case for zoning change request for somebody, a developer who actually is on the, the, the transition team, or team to be. Um, who, you know, he had spoken about, uh, using this area, how we, how it's like a pilot program for some further improvements. You know, looking at the timeframe for his projects. I know that obviously nothing happens over 90, so, or it was going to happen while this is being done.
Yeah.
Um, and I think obviously you guys have very good diligence on making sure that you're addressing the areas that obviously need it most. But when it comes to working with private entities like that, you know, how do you, is, is there, if we come across something and we say, "Okay, well, we know that this is going to affect the multimodal transportation plan," you know, can we put them in contact with you guys? See how it's gonna affect the plan at all, or?
So, A, yes. At, at some point, you know, in an ideal world, the, the Commission will adopt a plan. But I will, I will, a- and so with that being said, and depending on whatever timeline it is you want to adopt it, what I will say is that the worst plans are the static ones, right? And so, you know, just like you have routes to amend your future land use plan and your comprehensive plan and all of these other documents that you sit, that sit before you, I, I would encourage you to consider routes to amendments to this thing precisely so that you can accommodate those opportunities, which, some of which we may know of today and we may want to account for today, but certainly in order to account for opportunities that may not be known today.
Yeah, I mean, especially if we're talking about programs that are going to affect the parish's bottom line in terms of the budget and it's private developers who are looking to do this project. My God!
From a, so, and, and this is a larger global conversation, and it's not restricted to St. Tammany. I would say it's statewide. But one thing public entities don't do a good job of, and why we're so focused on leveraging existing capacity issues here or, or responding to those, is we don't do a good job of, you know, someone may have an idea as to what a roadway alignment would be, but what the functional benefits are, especially in terms of revenue at the local, state, or federal level that recoup that investment. We're not very good at, at evaluating that trade-off in, in budgeting decisions. Uh, but absolutely, and that's part of this sort of larger necessity for growth management, or resolving growth management issues. Uh, just, it, states that do do that really well, and, and we've addressed it in the plan, but would be things like concurrency requirements. So like, um, and that's more of like a pay-as-you-go type scenario, but it also impacts private developers. But like, if you're gonna go and roll out a bunch of infrastructure, you need to be able to, or if you're gonna have a development, you need to have a route to having infrastructure that functionally serves that development, whether that's police, fire, school systems, roads, sewer systems, drainage systems. Uh, state of Florida has pretty robust concurrency requirements, uh, but Louisiana has absolutely none. All right, so these are the larger sort of widening projects. Um, again, there was a lot of filtering done here. Uh, you see that sort of distribution between, uh, east and west recurring. And then I'll move on to just isolated intersection improvements. So these, the other projects that you saw may have intersection improvements embedded in them, uh, but these are projects that are really isolated at intersections for, um, they're, they're intersection-focused projects as, as opposed to larger alignments that may also include, uh, intersections. And then, um, this is the alternative transportation network, and as I mentioned earlier, and we've already synced up with the folks who are doing the, the work through the Regional Planning Commission, uh, but making sure that, um, that that is, you're leveraging your existing asset, right? And, and going back to the sort of transit question, where, where is density now? Where do we want to continue to leverage density? Where do we want to maintain rural character? These are all of the questions that have to be answered with respect to the transit question before you can really define robust projects. Uh, but in the meantime, you do have this incredible... But in the meantime, you do have this incredible asset in St. Tammany Parish, and a lot of the neighborhoods that are adjacent to it frankly aren't connected to it. And while it may have trailheads and while those trailheads may correspond with employment centers and, you know, educational institutions and other sort of critical facilities that people access, healthcare or otherwise, getting people on that pathway and between those employment centers, there's a bit of a housing disconnect there in terms of the connectivity. So with that being said, growth constraints and management is a serious concern, or is a serious sort of issue to be tackled. Ultimately, when you get into the implementation of these projects, considering environmental stewardship, I notice you're, I think, pointing at the image on the top right there. Yeah, that, so these are being built, right? There's examples in Washington State, the State of California, there may be a couple of others, but like these are wildlife crossings that are built, embedded in the delivery of projects. And so when you're building a highway or expanding it, you wrap that thing into the scope too from an environmental and ecological sensitivity perspective. And look, it may seem bold where we are geographically in the United States, but at the same time, I would argue that St. Tammany Parish, of any parish, has a certain level of sensitivity with its existing environment that should probably be a leader on these types of fronts. Now, they don't all have to be that bold. I mean, it could be simpler things like you see in the two bottom photos as well, but making sure that when you are functionally designing roadways, that low-impact design and the larger environmental context are absolutely paramount in that design process. And often, you know, you ended up with a heavy-handed civil approach and you get a lot of concrete.
I think I see a new debt here on that one. Would it be, but it's safe to say that where these are being constructed, that it brings in additional funding opportunities from Department of Interior, EPA, other conservation-related agencies?
Agencies.
Not your DOT-driven or state transportation-driven funded project. Will it bring in additional cost?
Some of these are exclusively US DOT-funded, but yes, it certainly warrants a whole nother level of participation by other interested agencies at the state or federal level. Anytime you're doing best practices in advancing the national conversation, agencies tend to like that. The next big thing here is, you know, right now you're sort of on a pay-as-you-go capital system, and you're maybe getting alignment a year out of council, but, you know, as a firm, we do a lot of larger infrastructure program design and management. And so what we see as the opportunity here is you've got existing revenue streams that I think one of them is being considered for reauthorization with maybe some restructuring coming up in March, but if you've got a revenue stream that's been authorized by the voters, let's address capacity issues and let's do it in a comprehensive way or as much of one as you can tackle locally. And then again, going back to this idea of you've got a fracture of jurisdictional sort of set of issues here, right? And the only way that this really works is with, if the parishes are collaborating with municipalities and the parish itself and the municipalities are collaborating with the state and leveraging, you know, the federal dollars to sort of make all of the magic happen in as robust a way as possible. Any, I'm done.
Any questions?
Thank you for your time. You seem like you haven't, you've gone through some thorough, you still are, and we look forward to continuing to work on the plan.
And my contact is right there. I don't know if you want to screenshot it. I'm terrible about business cards, but certainly don't hesitate to reach out. And Mr. Arce, the conversation we had is explicitly called out in its own independent section. Just wanted to make sure that that was apparent.
Yeah, I know you mentioned that you were looking at the different areas, and that's all of my, you mentioned, I do want more details on the side though, not to have-
Yeah, yeah, and we got a rough order of magnitude cost, but goes back to the sort of, what are the transit things that make sense now?
Okay, on the Gauze I-10 interchange, that's been a thorn in everybody's side in the greater Slidell area, and I didn't really see anything. Looked like the slide was off to the left a little bit where you couldn't see, but I understand through RPC that that interchange is supposed to be moving forward, but I don't, can't find out about where or when.
So we, what was the name of, exactly what interchange were you talking about?
Gauze I-10, G-A-U-S-E.
So if it's not in this project list and it's already in, you know, an existing capital program and the implementation dollars are already programmed, we did not touch it in this document. So if it's already on the sort of pathway for implementation and has, you know, front-end design commitments to it and/or implementation commitments, it's not called out here, but I will go and double-check on that particular one.
Okay, thank you.
And my question off of that would have been the crosswalk, that some of the areas in the Slidell were looking for crosswalks, but I think that's already being actively done in a different way at the moment, so it might be already being funded or something. But at the crosswalk on Front Street, I didn't see any of that kind of stuff to where it goes from Fremo over to the park area. But do you have crosswalks in?
So I would say in all, certainly, and this goes back to as you advance projects, right? Right now, we've got alignments, rough order of magnitude costs, you know, the major structural components that are going to drive those costs. But yes, if you are going to, if you're going to have a transportation program, and whether it's environmentally sensitive design that's prioritized or bike and pet accommodations throughout those alignments, those design standards need to be at the foundation of whatever engineering teams roll out so that they know their mandates before they get started on a design rollout and that those, the designs that ultimately end up coming out of that are responsive to the priorities that are established through a program.
So like you said earlier, that's coming later, and so I guess busing would be similar to coming later with, following the pedestrian, I don't know how that-
Well, it goes back to the, generally we would kind of silo that in the transit realm, but yes, accessible facilities associate, I mean, you know, if you're going to ride the bus, let's have a shaded shelter, proper trash cans and seating and, you know, things that make it a comfortable user experience.
Does this plan take into account like hurricane or emergency evacuation or anything like that?
It's-
Then we're going to have a ton, you know, without the area, it's a little bar.
So again, that's sort of the next level of detail that you get into when you prioritize projects, you know, you want to make sure that the elevations are above, you know, storm surge considerations and those kinds of things. And again, that goes back to growth management, right? And, you know, growing in places that are less risk is always a smart plan. Anything else? All right, thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
And we appreciate you coming and sorry that you ran into traffic.
Ross provided some decent cover for me, but yes, it is a nice alignment, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.